Good evening and welcome to tonight's regular meeting of the Board of Education. The meeting is called to order at 3:58 PM. Our student board member had an academic obligation they need to attend to and therefore will not be joining us this evening. Let's go ahead and take the roll.
Ms. Armstrong?
Present.
Dr. Elhessen? Mrs. Garza?
Present.
Ms. Stewart?
Present.
Mr. Crichfield?
Present, thank you. Tonight, we do not have requests addressing closed session agenda items. And at this time, the Board will adjourn to closed session and open session will resume at approximately 6:00 PM. Well, now reconvene to open session at 5:59 PM to resume our regular order of business. Board Clerk Myra Garza will provide an update on closed session topics.
Thank you, President Crichfield. The topics discussed in closed session were student matters, anticipated litigation, and labor negotiations. The Board did not take action in closed session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. We do not have any replacement pages for tonight. And tonight, we do not have any requests addressing agenda or non-agenda items. Do we have any corrections to this evening's agenda?
No corrections this evening.
Thank you. I would like to call Coordinator of Workability and Transition Partnership Program Ms. Irene Ramirez to the podium to lead us in the flag salute and share an inspirational message. Welcome, Irene.
Like that? Good evening, Board President, Board Members, Interim Superintendent Ms. Azavado, Cabinet, and guests. My name is Irene Ramirez, and I am a Special Education Coordinator for our Workability One and our Transition Partnership Program with Department of Rehabilitation. And I am here tonight to share an inspirational message with all of you. As many of you know, October is National Disability Employment Awareness Month. The theme of this year's theme is access to good jobs for all. This emphasizes the importance of inclusivity in the workplace. Unfortunately, the employment of persons with disabilities often does not receive the attention it deserves with an unemployment rate that is twice that of those with no disabilities. That is a significant gap in employment opportunities for this community, which is why our work is so vital. In celebrating neurodiversity in the workplace, we recognize the unique talents and perspectives that individuals with disabilities bring. It's essential for us to understand that everyone, regardless of their abilities, has a right to gain full employment and to contribute meaningfully to society. Bellflower Unified can proudly boast having been awarded the very first Workability One grant in the region over 35 years ago. This milestone represents decades of dedication to supporting our students with disabilities as they develop workplace readiness skills. Our programs empower these students to transition successfully into the workplace, equipping them with the tools and confidence that they need to thrive. This year alone, we have increased our placements by 30%. This tells us that students want to work, but it also tells us that our community and business partners are breaking away from past stereotypes and opening their doors to an inclusive workforce. As we consider the theme of access to good jobs for all, I hope our purpose and our students resonate with you as they motivate and inspire us daily. We want to open doors for our children, family, and neighbors to have an outstanding quality of life. And to quote the CEO of Google, "A diverse mix of voices leads to better discussions, decisions, and outcomes for everyone." I thank you for your time, and I invite you to look at some of our pictures of our students that we have here. These are all presently employed right now. They're all gaining paychecks. We have a student over here with his, we have workplace, we have payday, we have interview skills day, we have students at Long Beach Community Table, we have the monsoon cart. We have a student up at the right, at the left corner, has been wanting to work with cars for years, and we finally made that happen this year. And then we have our two gentlemen are working in the fields at, for our Lakewood Parks and Rec this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the work that you do.
Thank you.
All right, it is now time for stakeholder communications. Could I have CSEA Communications Officer Anthony Ramirez to the podium, please? Welcome, Anthony.
Board President Crichfield, Board Members, Superintendent Azavado, Cabinet Members, of course, and community members in attendance, good evening, everybody. As you already heard, my name is Anthony Ramirez. I'm the CSEA Chapter Number 32 Communications Officer. I'm here just to give you a brief update on CSEA business. CSEA participated in the Alliance Committee earlier this week. This committee brings together CSEA, BTA, District Administration, and you, the Board, and we discuss issues long before they can become problems. We welcome the open and frank dialogue that occurs in these meetings and are happy to see them continue through the year. CSEA representatives have also been attending BUSD Personnel Commission meetings, and we are following their actions rather closely. We sat on the advisory panel and interviewed candidates for the Executive Director position of HR, and we are awaiting the Commission's decision on hiring someone as a permanent director. CSEA is hopeful that some new stability can be brought to the Commission, and the principles of merit will be staunchly upheld and defended if necessary. CSEA President Michelle Cuellar and our Labor Rep Dotu Hospadalis have been continuing to meet regularly with Interim Superintendent Azavado and several other top administrators to keep an open channel of communication and to address any issues that arise as early as possible. I want to specifically recognize and thank Superintendent Lisa Azavado, Deputy Superintendent Ryan Smith, Assistant Superintendent Amalua Loa, and our CBO Renee Arcas for their direct involvement in helping to resolve the problem some of our classified workers have had in getting correctly paid for their extra hours. We look forward to finding a joint solution that prevents this from occurring in the future. We are happy to report that our leadership has been regularly meeting with Board leadership, and we welcome the ideas and discussions that arise from that candid, open dialogue. So, thank you. CSEA is also earnestly working with Dr. Brian to secure dates to continue our labor contract negotiations. A fair contract that spells out the conditions of employment and secures quality health benefits for all eligible classified workers can help make Bellflower Unified School District a destination district where quality employees are hired and retained, and which truly does add to the overall educational experience of all BUSD students and their families. That's my report for this evening or my update, and thank you for allowing me to share this with you tonight.
Thank you very much, Anthony. I don't see it on, are there any other stakeholder communications tonight? No? Okay. It is now time for a superintendent report, Ms. Azavado.
Thank you, good evening. Tonight, I'd like to thank our school staff and PTA for supporting Red Ribbon Week at our sites. The theme for this year is "Life as a Movie: Film Drug-Free." The Red Ribbon Week campaign serves to inspire communities and students to live drug-free lives. Tomorrow is our big culminating event. All of our schools will be visited by our Red Ribbon Judges on the big yellow school bus. I look forward to hearing about the exciting morning. On another note, I've received a few inquiries regarding the progress of the Mayfair Fields Project. As an update, our application to the Division of State Architect, or DSA, was accepted in May. In June, DSA requested a fire flow report, which has since been addressed. This month, we resubmitted updated plans to DSA, which now include an extended fire lane through the fields and an additional fire hydrant next to the home bleachers. In addition to working with DSA, we're coordinating with the LA County Flood Control District for approval to utilize the flood control space for parking, as well as completing the required California Geological Survey Report for the entire project. So while there is still significant work to be done before breaking ground, we're committed to ensuring the project proceeds safely and efficiently. We look forward to the project going out to bid and the start of the construction. Lastly, I'd like to wish everybody a special harvest event and Activities Week coming up. And believe it or not, November is going to be upon us very soon. So, thank you this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Azavado. Okay, moving on to discussion items. We have two discussion items this evening. Kick it right back to you, Ms. Azavado.
All right, so our first discussion item this evening is Item 9.1 Nutrition Services Update. I will turn it over to our Director of Nutrition Services, Ms. Crump.
Members, so today, I'm going to give an update on where we are with our Nutrition Services Department and our school meals. So... Which? This button?
Would you like to start sharing while they're working on the technology portion of it?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so what you'll see is our organizational chart. So, it's five administrative staff, including myself. And then we have our FSA twos, our FSMs, our warehouses and delivery drivers, and our FSA threes, which work at our central kitchen. We have four programs, oh, here's our organizational chart. So, 60-plus employees all involved here. So, we have four programs, our NSLP, that's a National School Lunch Program, our CACFP, that's a Child and Adult Care Food Program for after-school supper, catering, and our Seamless Summer Option, which is what we provide over the summer. The next slide will show the kitchen sites. So, we have 12 kitchen sites, or 12 sites with kitchens, and then two without kitchens. That's Somerset and Los Flores. So, that's just to kind of go over that. And then our central kitchen is where we have our production kitchen. That's where we prepare all of our supper meals. We have our warehouse and freezer, so a lot of our meals are delivered straight from our central kitchen. And then the next slide that we would cover after that shows our cafeteria fund. So, maybe we can just go to that slide once it's up.
Yeah, and the Board does have paper copies, too. We'll do that, just so you know.
Okay, so then, we're looking at our cafeteria fund here from last year. So, that's where you'll see the NSLP, CACFP, the Supply Chain Assistance Funds, the Kitchen Infrastructure, you'll see it listed three times. So, the first two are from 2021, 2022. So, those funds were awarded to us as a grant because of COVID. So, all of the districts were awarded the Kitchen Infrastructure Funds and the Supply Chain Assistance Funds because of the supply chain issues after COVID. So, that's why you'll see it listed quite a few times there. The first two Kitchen Infrastructure amounts, that's what's left from the 2021, 22 year. And then the 2022 Kitchen Infrastructure, that's what we were awarded in 2022. Catering is also listed, but catering is our non-program resource. So, it's listed there, but it's not included as part of our Fund 13. It's part of Fund 13, but we can't claim it as far as like how the funds are spent. They're not spent on the students. So, that brings our total restricted balance to about 7.5. And so, right now, we are on a spend-down plan, and we have excess funds, as I'm sure you're well aware of. So, there are quite a few things that we have in place right now as far as improvements to start spending down the excess funds. First is the staffing. So, I do want to thank you for approving the five hours, the 3.5 for our manager and our FSA twos. So, we have put that in effect as of September 20th. And then, we also plan to fill 10 vacancies, which were pretty much filled as of right now. And then I plan to open other positions as well at our high schools. Warehouse Delivery Supervisor was also approved. We're still working on that position as far as like the details of the job duties. And then, hopefully, coming soon, Kitchen Supervisor as well. Other improvements, our kitchens, we are in the process of remodeling Bellflower High with a goal of having it started by summer 2025. So, that will also dip into significantly spend down about, we're not, we don't have an exact amount as far as how much it'll spend, but the contractor did kind of say that it would be about a $2 million project. Again, those numbers aren't confirmed yet, so it's tentative. And then we also have a plan to remodel Ramona and Ernie Pile in the following years. We're also in the process of purchasing new equipment. So, we've been purchasing new equipment continuously. It's only been about two months, and we've already purchased about $120,000 to $140,000 worth of new equipment. So, that can also go up anywhere to $400,000 plus for new equipment throughout our department. BUSD Fresh is what we started. So, we have put salad bars in some of our, well, all of our kitchens utilizing the serving line. But we're implementing the Freight Farm, the Mayfair Greenhouse, and we are bringing in local produce from Old Grove Orange Farms in San Bernardino. So, they are actually delivering organic, fresh produce to our school sites or to our central kitchen, and we deliver it to the school sites within the same day. So, that's another improvement. And then here are some pictures. So, here are some pictures of our salad bar this year, set up, like I said, on the serving line. So, those are fresh watermelon that we actually got from Old Grove Orange, celery sticks, pears, freshly cut whole oranges. And the kids actually prefer the whole fruit as opposed to the packaged. So, next slide, some more pictures. These are our salads, plums, all of this freshly prepared. Next slide. These are our freshly prepared, some of our freshly prepared breakfast items, our yogurt, our breakfast pizza that we make from scratch. This is our newest item, our bagels, where the strawberry jam is actually made with fresh strawberries. We had our cheese grits and then our chorizo burrito that we make in-house. Next slide. And then we have our freshly prepared lunch. Here are some of those items. We've got our orange chicken, brown rice broccoli. This is our chicken salad with a fresh cilantro dressing that we also make in-house, and then our chicken Alfredo dish in the top-left corner. Next slide. So, this is just something that I kind of wanted to bring to your attention. It's not immediate, but it's something that's coming up in the next three years or so, is that there has been a change to the nutrition guidelines or the nutrition standards. So, there's going to be a reduction in the added sugars and sodium amounts. The CDE is recommending that we kind of slowly implement it in the next three years so that the students are, the hope is that their palates will be adjusted by the third year and that they are going to be more tolerable for them to be able to enjoy the low sodium, lower sodium and lower added sugar foods. So, like I said, that's in three years. So, some of the things that could come up because of this is more speed-scratch or scratch-made meals, you know, because typically processed food has higher sodium and higher added sugar. So, that's something that we're keeping in mind. And with that in mind, we have a plan to promote farm-fresh, so having the farmers' market site presentations. So, Old Grove Orange actually does farmers' market site presentations, where they come to the site, set up like a little mini farmer's market to get the kids used to fresh fruits and vegetables. So, that's something also that we're going to be doing. Continuing the serving line improvements, the remodel staffing, like I said, adapting to the new nutrition guidelines, and then continuing to work with the Public Information Officer on like marketing, social media, and putting any flyers out on our website. And that's what I have as far as the presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. I'll open up the questions to my colleagues. Renita.
Yes, hi. Thank you for that presentation. I'm excited about, you know, the upgrades, and I am kind of worried, though, about lessening. I mean, it's great to gradually reduce sodium intake and the sugar intake because that does contribute to a lot of the health problems later on. Are you planning on doing maybe like another fair to get the families involved and let the families know what you're doing to try to get them on track? Because, you know, they're here at school and only, what, six hours a day, six, seven hours a day? But then after that, they have those meals at home and fast food, you know what I mean? So, are you planning anything to get the families involved and on board?
As of right now, we didn't have anything planned with the families, but I have done, in my previous work at other districts, where we typically, like at a parent night, we would set up a booth and kind of have the parents taste-test the foods and, you know, get familiar with some of the things that we're offering. So, that could be a possibility of something that we do in the near future, just so that they're more aware of, you know, all the updates.
Well, I just want to let you know I enjoyed the last one that we did at the Nutrition Center.
When was that?
That was, oh, here I go. I don't have my calendar with me. But it was the farm, it was the farm-fresh where you had the salads and, it was at the Nutrition Center. I can't remember what year it was.
Oh, was that?
Ms. Renita, are you remembering the Freight Farm grand opening? Where we had the different stations where people can go and taste-test at the Freight Farm?
Yeah, that was really cool and tasty. I mean, it was some really good food, but that's what I'm looking forward to. Something else like that, to kind of bring the families in, though, to let them know what's going on. Because, you know, the kids do, they'll go home and they'll complain. I know I have the kids, you know. But actually, my last one is graduating this year, yay! But sometimes they'll complain like, "Mom," you know? And we have guidelines that we have to follow in order to receive those funds. So, I understand that, and I think the families, we need to communicate that to the families also.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Any other questions for my colleagues? Ms. Garza.
Thank you, President Crichfield. My question pertains to the remodeling for Ramona and Ernie Pile. What is it that you're remodeling in those schools?
For Ramona and Ernie Pile?
Yes.
So, we haven't actually met with the contractor yet on Ramona and Ernie Piles. We're focusing on BHS. But Ramona is one of our oldest sites. I know that they have a kitchen or serving line where they're kind of still using the old-school burners. So, it may be a whole kitchen remodel. I know also Pile has a whole dishroom area that will probably need to be pulled up. And so, from there, yeah, it could be a whole kitchen remodel. Most likely, it's a whole kitchen remodel, similar to the ones that we did at the other sites, Foster, Washington, like a few years back.
Any of the 12 schools on your presentation, are they going to be getting the ACs?
So, the ACs aren't covered by our funds because it's considered structural. So, anything structural is like non-program funds, is usually general fund. But we have been talking with Patrick and had a few meetings on what way that we wanted to go with that. But we would not be, it wouldn't come from cafeteria fund for that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All my questions.
One follow-up to that. So, I know the funds are a bit different, and you mentioned... First of all, thank you for all the work. I know you and your staff work very hard, so thank you for what you do. And I've gotten a lot of feedback on the food lately, and it's great, so it's appreciated. You mentioned that the catering fund, that's separate. So, is that still considered the same cafeteria fund restricted, or is that separate?
It's restricted. So, basically, anything that we bring in from cafeteria fund, it pays for itself. So, we don't use cafeteria fund expenses for employee payroll or anything like that or supplies. It's all separate and comes from whatever we make from the cafeteria fund.
Okay.
So, it doesn't tie in.
So, it's completely separate, almost like its own separate thing? So, what comes out of the catering fund?
Just whatever we purchase as far as like the meals that are ordered from the catering orders. So, like board meals, any meals that are outside of the school day. So, if there's a catering order, sometimes we have like other sites will order something for their staff.
It's like feeding adults, right? Like you can't use the other funds for...
Exactly.
Okay.
It's adults.
So, does it go to staffing?
Yeah, yeah. It also goes, we have a certain percentage that goes to catering, depending on the amount of time that they spend doing catering. Sometimes when it's slow with catering, there's not as much for our catering staff to do, so we try to split it up. But yeah, we split up the percentages so that it's NSLP and catering.
Okay. How is the catering doing? Because I know, I believe, last presentation, we kind of went back a few years, and it's kind of fluctuated a bit. Where would you say it is now compared to, say, three years ago and even last year?
As of last year, it was pretty good. We were able to make about $30,000 or so, don't quote me on that. But so far, the start of this year, we haven't been as busy as I can remember us being from previous years. So, I am watching that as far as what this year is going to look like, but we haven't really had that many orders so far in these first few months.
Okay.
So, that's something that we're kind of looking at.
Is that something that is like, is that a benefit to the overall cafeteria goal? Like, because I know you used to have like contracts with, I think, the city to do catering and a couple other places, right?
And we still do catering for like Laco, Downey, whenever we get the orders with them. But we did have an official contract with Laco right before COVID. So, we had more orders going to them, but it's just not as much now. So, we're kind of watching it to see if it picks up a little later in the year.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm going to kick it over to Vice President Stewart.
I just have a follow-up on the catering funds as well. If you're always making money and it builds and builds and builds, how do you ever spend it? Or what do you spend it on?
For catering?
Yeah.
Honestly, most of the time, it's spent on our catering staff. So, because our catering staff, our lead, for example, she's been with us for quite some time. If we were to put her strictly coming from the catering funds, it would use the majority of what we're bringing in for catering. And so, basically, we're not making as much to fund all of our catering staff at 100%. So, we've split up the percentages to make sure that we at least, you know, break even or a little above even. We've been pretty lucky that we've been able to have a bit of an excess. I know previous years, there was one year... Um, I know previous years, there was one year right after COVID sometime uh where we were actually able to use the cafeteria funds to help pay for the summer meals for the kids because we didn't have the summer program uh approved yet. It was all new. Um, so that's another benefit to the catering funds because it is separate from the, uh, the typical restricted funds. We were able to use it for summer meals that didn't qualify. So that's another way that we use.
Thank you.
Those funds. You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Um, with the uh ending fund balance uh slide, um, you mentioned the uh different uh grants, I guess I'll call them grants, th- those funds. Uh, there was the one from twenty-one, twenty-two and then, and the other one from twenty-two. When do those expire? I know a lot of, a lot of funding is expiring.
Yeah, uh, so they actually, they being CDE. CDE uh took away the expiration date for the first two kitchen infrastructure funds. And then the twenty-twenty-two kitchen infrastructure expires June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Mm-hmm. And so those, we've actually used uh for some of our extra time and training and at uh, um, kitchen equipment. So when those go away, you know, we won't have that as an additional.
Okay. That's actually, that's actually a good segue to my next question. And I'm not oblivious to the fact that, you know, we've talked about the cafeteria fund before. So I appreciate you being here and answering some of these questions. Um, so like with, with the total balance, again, I think it was projected to be a significantly higher than this, that the projection anyway. And that's why the spend down plan. Um, the spend down plan is complete, right? You have a plan?
We did just completed. Um, Mike was working on uh updating it with CDE. And sh- and the CDE representative did contact us with the final amount to spend down.
Great. Could, could you provide that to the board when you have it available?
Yes.
Thank you. And uh with the, and I appreciate the effort to do the spend. You mentioned the staffing, uh, ten vacancies. Um, is that gonna be an issue? Cause is the ongoing uh revenue, is that able to maintain that staffing? Or is that something that's gonna be temporary and then, once you spend it down, you're not gonna be able to have those people?
Yes. So um, the spend down plan that, that CDE put in effect, uh, they give districts up until five years to spend it down cause they recognize that it's a lot of money to try and use within the years. So um, what we did is we put together a breakdown throughout the years. Uh, and with the carryover, well, first I'll start with the spend down amount that CDE wants us to, to complete. That will be spent down in about two years, two or three years. Um, when that gets spent down, or that's what we proposed, but it could be sooner depending on, you know, uh, inflation or, you know, whatever else uh unforeseen uh comes up. But once that amount is spent down, then it starts dipping into the other excess funds. Uh, so we, once we put everything together, it looked like in about three years, we would be down to.
Okay, can it level out?
Yeah, yeah. But three years is when those uh nutrition guidelines go into effect.
Okay.
So.
Can, can I ask, how did we get to that point to have such a large, cause in, in policy, I think it's, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's ten percent of the annual cost should be in that fund. And when I did the numbers, it, it was definitely not seven and a half million. So how did it get to that point? Was it just, is it sometimes, I guess, like with these grants and the funding and COVID? Like it was it, you just like give me like a general explanation?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question. Um, I think what happened was uh when I first started the first two years, uh, I got here in seventeen, eighteen, the first two years, we were actually in the red. So Nutrition Services was in, was in the red, COVID hit. Um, we started applying for all of these grants with the intention that this would help get us out of the red. Um, so we were awarded the grants, but in the process, the changes that were made to the meals uh unexpectedly increased our participation and the fact that meals became free. So the meals becoming free, the grants, uh, the extra funding, um, the increased participation, the money just started increasing. Um, and then the funds had already come in. So from my standpoint, that's kind of what happened to get us to where we're at now.
That, that's fair. Um, but the goal is to get to that uh allowed amount, right, with the spend down plan down set. Do you know what that amount is?
For the recent one that CDE approved?
The uh, the per policy, how much uh the cafeteria fund can have?
Uh, it's six months.
Six months of?
Si- six months is what CDE allows. So we're over six, six months, we're over the six months. Yeah, so they allow districts to have up to six months excess reserves or reserves.
Six months of expenditures.
Expenditures, okay.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
No worries. Um, okay, great. I have a couple more questions. Does anybody else wanna jump in? All right. Um, okay, the, I know my colleague brought up the ACs and I understand, uh, you know, if it's a fix to the building, it's a building improvement. Hopefully, we can work together and, and figure that out. Um, but what do you, what is your assessment on our, our cafeterias? We hear a lot about it. Um, you know, the, the conditions of our workers is very important.
Yeah.
Um, what's your assessment of that situation and, and what do you plan to do going forward? If anything, to kind of help us accommodate, make sure that the conditions are safe and comfortable?
Yeah, so I actually wasn't, uh, when I started, I wasn't aware of what, uh, what was actually set up in the kitchens. Uh, I was told that it was swamp coolers. So I kind of had to get information on what exactly that did and how that cooled the air. Um, but there have been issues as far as like the cooling capability of the swamp coolers. I reached out to other districts um that, that I work with. And they also confirmed that they too have swamp coolers in the kitchens and that their kitchens are typically cooled from the AC in the cafeteria. So there's an AC in the cafeteria, swamp cooler in the kitchen, um, and the sites lift the, the gates and let the air come in through the cafeterias. I know that that doesn't always, like on the hottest days, you know, and it's been pretty hot this year, that doesn't always work. So um, yeah, like I said, we've kind of been discussing some other options. Um, because I've actually been in some of the kitchens with the ladies during meal service. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm with you. I've, I've been in there uh and kind of seen it. So I, I know it's a, it's a real issue. How many of our, our cafeterias, uh, or kitchens don't have ACs?
I don't believe any of the kitchens have ACs.
Is it any, really?
Um, maybe Mayfair.
Okay. Um, I won't hold you to it. Uh, but I, I think that'd be great if we worked together on finding that solution cause it does seem like a problem that, like you have. I've been in there as well. So I can see there could be some improvements uh in that.
Yeah. I will say that like some of the sites um say like, we're fine. Um, and then other sites kind of get like warmer temperatures. So I'm not sure if it's uh an issue with the AC in the cafeteria that may be leading to that or, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, it just comes down to if a, if one of our classified or one of our workers isn't comfortable with how we address, it's really important. Some people might be, have different needs or, you know, be a little less prone to overheating. But that, you know, all we can do is all we can do and I, I'm sure we'll be able to do something.
Yeah.
Um, then one, oh, sorry, I got, they're all popping up here. I'm talking too much. Uh, Ms. Garza.
Thank you, President Chrisfield. Um, on this slide for the cafeteria fund ending, you have, just to confirm, you're saying that the kitchen infrastructure funds and the infrastructure training funds are coming to an end or they have been extended?
So they've been extended. Those first two, uh, the funds and then the training funds, the ten thousand and the forty-five thousand, those originally had a deadline, but they uh got rid of that dead- deadline. Uh, we're just expected to spend it. Um, and this is the remaining balance, which actually is probably lower than that because we just purchased more equipment and we're using this for our equipment purchases. Um, but then there's the twenty-twenty-two amount uh that does expire, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay. And so with that fund, um, what would you like be able to purchase with that infrastructure fund for the twenty-twenty-two one?
Yeah, so that, those, that amount can actually go to any remodels, um, any extra training, same thing, training hours. Uh, it's not, how do I explain this? It's not uh as restricted for the kitchen infrastructure. So we have a little more wiggle room as to like what we can spend those funds on with the kitchen infrastructure funds.
ACs?
Possibly.
Have, uh, has, is the four hundred thirty thousand still the amount you currently have or have you spent down on that?
I would have to check with my account tech. Um, and also I can check with CDE to confirm the AC purchase for the kitchen infrastructure.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Ms. Stewart?
Um, I have a few really quickly. Do you know why we only have AC at Mayfair?
Well, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Can we find out that? Cause that just doesn't seem equitable at all. Can we get that on a Friday memo, please?
Yes.
Thank you. And then I guess my next one is, are there any, I guess this is more facilities than her, but are there any of our kitchens where the swamp coolers are not working?
Um, I wouldn't be able to answer that.
Can we get that on our Friday memo as well? And then I guess my next question will be for staff. If the swamp coolers are not working in our kitchens, what do we do for them?
There should be a work order in the system to correct that error.
Okay, so can you just let us know if some of them are not working?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Patrick is aware, we have been uh in contact. Um, and we have provided fans, like commercial sized fans uh for some of our sites or all of our sites. Um, but yeah, as far as like which ones don't work or which ones work and just aren't cooling, yeah, I'm not too sure on which.
I'm just asking because I'm a PE teacher in my school and we used to have swamp coolers. And can you imagine in the locker room with a whole bunch of girls in there, it's really hot. So I can't imagine with a kitchen and our district finally put AC in and it's like a world of difference. So I can't imagine having our kitchen workers working with fans. Um, so if the swamp coolers are not working, then I would hope that we can get on that like ASAP so that they are working.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. I have one more question and it kind of goes, it's kind of a callback to last time we, we, we talked at the board. Um, one of the things that I, I would like, I think that the work and the things we have going on with the, the fresh foods and, and it's just such an improvement. Uh, part of like marketing and uplifting our, our district and uh is really getting that word out there. And I know each department kind of plays its own role, just as the district does. But uh, you, sometimes when I see our, our, our vehicles, our trucks, they're just maybe uh, they are prime real estate to show off what we do. Have, has there been any further discussion from, since the last time on how to uh use those assets to market the good work that we're doing and show parents uh the fresh foods and, and market the program?
Yes, so we actually just purchased a new delivery truck. Uh, and then we're also talking about purchasing a, a car uh and getting some sort of uh logo or picture or um, it's not a sticker.
Like a vinyl wrap?
Yeah, for like a vinyl wrap uh for our vehicles to kind of spruce up the, the marketing and let them know about Nutrition Services and what we offer.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a, there's a sense of pride and there's a sense of, you know, marketing. But it also, uh, it just shows parents, I mean, cause you see them driving around the community all the time.
Yeah.
Might as well use it to show the good work that you and your staff are doing.
Yep.
Um, any other que- oh, Ms. Garza.
Thank you. Um, so just to piggyback on what President Chrisfield is saying, during our um hopefully upcoming, you know, um, what is it called, I lost train of thought. Um, when we promote ourselves with, you know, School of Choice and maybe a school fair?
Enrollment campaign?
Yes, an enrollment, thank you, enrollment campaign. Uh, do we have thoughts about including our Nutrition Services to make a presentation? Maybe have a booth? Um, or even just kind of hop alongside with, when it, with our staff? And whenever we go out to different events where we want to make sure that people know that these are the kinds of services and quality foods that we serve our kids. Because I can tell you, this looks so much better than the other, some of the other districts around us. And I think that that would help, you know, those parents make those decisions between coming to our cap, our district or maybe staying at their home district.
Oh, is it on me? I thought that was a question. Was, was that it?
It was actually a question, but, so do we have any thoughts about doing that?
We can, we will take that consideration, absolutely. It sounds like a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Um, anybody else going once, going twice? Ms. Grump, thank you. Really appreciate all the, the clarity, the, the work you and your staff are doing. You're doing fantastic. Uh, and thank you for answering all the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to our next discussion item. Next item is nine point two California Assessment of Student Performance and English Language Proficiency Assessments for California Progress Update. I'll turn it over to Ms. Carter.
Thank you. Okay, tonight, um, I'll be sharing an update on the most recent state testing information that recently posted for the public. A variety of data is released and collected throughout the year. State testing data is released preliminarily in August and the final results are released in October. By December, the state will be releasing dashboard data and throughout the year, local data will be collected, reviewed and used to inform plans. For example, sites have been looking at data since August and will be providing a progress update in November and December, which will include their site goals, PLC goals and commitments and their next steps. NWEA benchmark scores have been posted to School City and sites should be analyzing the results and identifying intervention supports as needed. Also, intervent- uh, information regarding student math results were recently pulled district-wide and provided to the site administration to use while progress monitoring throughout the year. As we review the data, it's important to put in context the experiences our students have undergone. Although we should not use COVID as a reason for student difficulties and barriers to learning as we're now in our fourth year of school since the closures, we can't ignore the impact that closing schools and uh isolation that our students experienced for almost two years had on them. Our third grade students last year were pre-kinder age, our seventh grade students were third grade students and our eleventh grade students last year in, were in seventh grade in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. This gives us the context that our current fourth grade students had the most interruption in their beginning of their school years. When looking at the data in comparison to pre-COVID uh years, these students have not yet rebounded to the proficiency of their predecessors, whereas other grade levels have begun to close that gap. The following data represents English Language Arts, Math and Science results. Students in grades three through eight and eleven are tested in ELA in math and fifth, eighth and high school students are tested in science. These tests are also broken into claims referenced in the table on the slide. The overall score is based on an adaptive multiple choice exam and a performance task which requires students to critically think and solve multi-layered questions and explain their reasoning. An ELA, that looks like an essay. Students that score level two, three or four are answering on grade level questions. However, the level of complexity of questions answered may vary depending on the student's knowledge of the standard. Students scoring four or three are meeting the complexity of the standard wherein students scoring a two have a foundational knowledge of the standard. Students scoring one are not consistently understanding grade level knowledge. The following data will provide information on the percent of students meeting or exceeding or earning a four or three on the state exams during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Bellflower slightly decreased or basically maintained the level of proficiency of students meeting or exceeding the standards for science last year. Our students scored better than three surrounding districts. Um, however, Bellflower scored lower than the county and the state. Across the district, four schools improved in comparison to proficiency levels the previous year. This is the first year that this data has been visualized in this manner. It was displayed this way for our principals at our most recent principal meetings so that they could have an opportunity to learn from each other, the strategies that practices, uh, strategies and practices that schools uh uh, strategies and practices that schools uh determined showed improvement and attributed to their improvement. When looking at the scores across three years, we are able to see trends. Scores that increase over the course of three years show a positive trend. Those that decline over the course of three years show a negative trend and those that neither increase or decrease year to year show no trend. Trend information helps teachers, teacher leaders make instructional decisions when reviewing data. In science, three of our schools showed a positive trend over the last three years. Bellflower maintained proficiency levels of students on the English Language Arts assessment, scoring better than three surrounding districts, however, not better than the county or state scores. The trends show four schools with positive trends and two with negative. The remaining schools have no trend. Some of the practices and strategies shared by principals that their site found to be successful in improving student outcomes are emphasizing and providing opportunities for teacher collaboration, vertical alignment and regularly looking at data. In comparison to the previous year, six schools made improvement. At the last principal meeting, principals shared not only practices that they felt supported student achievement in comparison to last year, but also how the sites are planning to improve student achievement based on those scores. Many of the sites have noted that there was a more concerted effort and emphasis on vertical alignment in the elementary and department articulation in the secondary, starting in August and continuing in September this year. The site days that were provided also allowed sites to provide PD to teachers and start the year um with a more focused beginning. And this year, more sites are budgeting for release days for grade level teams to continue this alignment and data analysis culture throughout the year. In reviewing grade level achievement over the last three years in comparison to how students scored pre-COVID, the data shows that our eleventh grade students have closed the gap in comparison to pre-COVID scores. Our third grade students are the farthest from closing the gap. However, if you review the cohort data for the previous third grade students, you can see that there is a positive trend for those third graders as they move from third to fourth to fifth grade. When reviewing the data, the same data by student groups, we see that our LTALs or our long-term English learners have made progress. However, our English learner population shows no trend. The reclassification student group is closing the gap. Each year, increasing in proficiency, as is the same for our students that are economically disadvantaged, white or students with disabilities. The remaining student groups show no trend. Students support, uh, to support our English learner population, um, the instruction division is also reviewing and developing ELD and newcomer professional development opportunities for sites this year. Um, working to identify if a tier one reading program similar to that of which we have for math may benefit student achievement district wide. Also, we've developed a tracking uh sheet for site administrators, which identifies pertinent data for with regard to our English learners that we're providing to our administrators. It includes the total students that have been reclassified, the students at each level and the um English learner achievement on assessments. And we plan to continue to provide that to our administrators throughout the year. For math, the percent of students that met or exceeded standard in Bellflower on the math assessment is more than two surrounding districts. Bellflower increased two percentage points, which is a larger increase than five of the surrounding districts and the county and the state. The district overall and seven sites show a positive trend over the last three years. Some of the strategies that were attributed to math improvement were the implementation of ST math and the use of common assessments. In comparison to last year, nine schools showed improved student achievement on the math assessment. Third grade, similar to ELA, has the largest gap still to fill since COVID. However, the other grade levels are beginning to close that gap. When looking at how student groups scored on the assessment, also similar to ELA, long-term English learners have made an improvement. English learners have maintained a low level of proficiency and students with disabilities have a positive trend over the last three years. In comparison to last year, all but one student group has improved. Switching to our LPAC or English Language Proficiency Assessment, this data was also released as final. Um, the tests, this test is administered to our English learners annually to determine their students' level of proficiency and readiness to reclassify. Students that earn a four on this test may qualify to be reclassified and no longer need to take the test. The test is administered across multiple grade spans wherein the complexity of the test changes based on uh the student progress throughout the grades. Students are scored on a scale of one to four, four meaning that students' English skills are well-developed and one meaning that students' English skills are beginning. To set the context prior to looking at the English proficiency scores, please keep in mind that the goal for our English learner students is to score a four on the LPAC so that they may qualify for reclassification. This chart shows the reclassification percentage across a few years. The state stopped reporting this data in twenty-one, twenty-two, so we began pulling our own data the following years. Upon return from COVID, there were a few reclassifications. However, there has been a concerted effort to ensure all students are able to reclassify if they meet the reclassification criteria. We found that pulling data from the district level and sending frequent reminders as well as revisiting and revising our English learner master plan in twenty-three, twenty-four um helped our stakeholders understand the importance of reclassifying our students. Although there was a decline in the percent of students scoring a four for Bellflower in comparison to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, it is important to remember that we had a higher reclassification rate last year, which decreased the amount of students that possibly could score at the highest levels. Before stu, Bellflower student proficiency on this assessment is in line or higher than the sun, than some surrounding districts and the county and the state. When looking at the scores across the district, we see that there was a decline in student scoring at the highest level at all sites except Somerset. The trend on the scores are reflective of the reclassification rates. As mentioned previously, data is polled and analyzed throughout the year. The next state level data reporting will be uh the release of the dashboard, which is projected to happen in December and be released to the uh to the public.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Any questions from the board? Vice President Stewart.
Um, my first question is, when was ST math and the common assessments implemented? I know you said that was like a reason that we had some growth. Can you tell me like around what year we implemented that?
I can't give you the exact year, but I can tell you that ST math has been in place for probably around five years. And uh the implementate, the level of implementation is what uh helped us see that that was what was um helping the school sites. We actually had a school site that implemented it um with uh some very good fidelity and they found success with their students. And that was shared.
I'm imagining that they maybe had a time where they had all the kids on there at a certain amount of time or things like that, yes?
Yeah, they have to do it a certain amount of time during the week. And then they also um had a time when they were motivating kids and and talking about them about their goals.
So because of that success, did our other sites follow along and follow that plan as well?
Absolutely, we shared that. We had the school share what they did and um other schools started implementing with more fidelity.
My second question is, um, do we ever partner with other school districts just to find out what they're doing with like ELA or math? Obviously, some of these scores that are really high, like is that a thing or are they like, no, because you'll steal our kids? Or how does that work?
Sometimes, yeah, we can call other districts. Um, I did actually look into Compton because I know that that's one that has been talked about in many of the articles. And some of the things that they're talking about that helped them were they partnered with a college that brought in tutors into the the classrooms and that was a big help to them. Uh, they also talk a lot about um data analysis and uh frequent looking, frequently looking at their data.
I know we have, we have started to partner with ABC with our Cal Apps program. Maybe we should ask them if we could look at some of the things they're doing, because obviously I know they have different kids, but they're doing some good things. I have one more question, but I'll let you guys go ahead and I'll come back. Um, I guess my last question is, obviously, these test scores aren't great. We understand that. Um, I just, I guess it's more of a comment. I just really feel like, I don't know if we've ever done this or I don't know. It's, I'm just throwing ideas out there because we're all collaborating and we're trying to get our test scores up for our kids. But I just wish that we maybe would think out of the box. And I just wrote down like, I just again wish that we would maybe survey teachers or parents and students and ask them what they think would help or a town hall style meeting or some type of meeting, because we have so many good teachers that have ideas, but how do their ideas ever come to light? I guess maybe through leadership meetings or something like that they could, but I just, I feel like we need all hands on deck right now to try to make these scores better. And so I hope that we collaborate as a district staff and as to try to come up with some different ways that we haven't done before, out of the box, to try to improve these scores even more. That was really it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. I'm gonna kick it over to Ms. Garza, but real quick, wh- when was this test taken?
Last year in May, starts in May.
In May? So the.
Maybe mid-April.
So the, so the uh things that we've put in place this year, the additional supports at the site, everything that we've been able to do, that wouldn't be reflective of these scores?
No, what I mentioned in the presentation are things that we're doing this year. Um, it's sort of in response to that, because we have had the preliminary scores since August.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Garza?
Thank you. Um, so a couple of questions. First of all, do, when the sites get together and they formulate their plan for the whole school year, do they pick a specific area where they're going to be focused more on? Obviously, they're not gonna forget about all the other subjects. But are they focused more on maybe ELA? Or are they focused just in writing or are they focused in math? Is there a pattern with our schools?
Typically, our schools are focusing on English Language Arts and math instruction. Writing is part of English Language Arts, of course, and that is, uh, some of the sites have a focus area there, but it's mostly in reading and math.
Okay. Where I was, where I'm employed at, um, I know that, this is some just suggestion. We did focus from grades, kinder or actually TK to second grade. They focused on the reading portion, so the fundament, foundational reading skills. And the whole district went through um training. They have the TOSSAs on campus. And so their job was to make sure that they focus on those skills at the early stages and then that way they can go ahead and and continue on from third to fifth grade with that strong foundation. And you and I have spoken about that several times. So I'm wondering if we can kind of look into that um on the others, on the flip side. The third through fifth grade with um, in our district, third through sixth grade would be focused on math. And I know that a lot of that funding that was um given to schools before, while during the COVID time, uh, the, with the SIR funds and I know, again, we're coming to one and with those now, was focused on the math portions. So maybe something like that could be, um, I don't know, we can kind of piggyback on that.
We have, we have talked, you're absolutely right. Uh, as far as the TOSSAs, um, we are, we don't have those in our schools, but we have talked about um what we're looking at for professional development. And we have already reached out to a few places to pull together um some ideas for our reading um professional development, but also, as I mentioned in the presentation, we're looking at the possibility of a tier one platform. And uh with that, to Ms. Stewart's comment, we would be um looking for some feedback on that, because we're looking to see if it would be something that along the lines of our ST math math program. So it would be across the district, supporting in that reading area.
And just so um everyone understands what tier one is, would you describe that for me, please?
Tier one is, it's basically first good instruction. So all students are gonna receive tier one. However, uh, if students are struggling in the classroom, they could have um some small group instruction or um other supports still in the classroom, because tier one is in the classroom. Tier two is not necessarily out of the classroom. It's just more targeted help on targeted areas that students are struggling at. And it could be in the classroom or out. And then tier three is even smaller, usually around two to three or one to one supports are happening in a tier three.
Perfect, thank you for that um clarification and definitions. Within this tier one and our plans for the future, are we also looking into our DI schools? And how they need kind of a revamped or something that helps their needs, because it's not the same?
Absolutely. We um have our dual immersion and multilingual services coordinator that we hired this year and she's working directly on that. Uh, we also uh pulled the scores for our DI students. Because we upload them into School City, we're able to disaggregate just our DI students out. So we have looked at that as well.
Could we have a uh?
I can share with you, yes, reading and math.
Perfect. And then also one other request, thank you, colleagues.
You mind if I'm gonna kick it over to Stewart, then I'll come right back?
Sure, yes, thank you.
Vice President Stewart.
Oh, no, I just had really one comment again. Um, even, again with the collaboration, because I just feel like when people are doing really good things, we wanna know what they're doing. Do we even do that within our own district? Like some of these scores at some of the sites, Foster's one that stands out, they're really, really good. Do we do that even during PLSCs or something or take a group from that school to go over and teach others? Or do we do any of our own inner district collaboration when we see good things happening?
We've started with our principals, that's why we did these visualizations this year so that we could see the schools that uh made an improvement based off of last year and they uh shared ideas together in a group, what was working, what they're planning for in the future. So if we see those bright spots, that isn't outside of the picture, that we would have a principal that says, yes, I have something that's working that they could share.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Garza, back to you.
Thank you. Um, I'm also interested to see if we can get a report on following these cohorts throughout their academic years, um, because we do see like all of the third grade for um, you know, different years. But I'm very interested in seeing what their trends are as we, as they go, you know, as they progressed in twenty, like twenty nineteen to, and then we skipped those two years, but then it went to twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, so.
I can provide that in the Friday memo. The difficult part of it, just so you know, is you're only gonna have a few years. So you'll have, third grade will have three years after, fourth will have two and fifth will have just the one year of data after that. But I can also show you third grade over time, but um I'll include the cohort data in the memo.
And I know it, that does take time for you to compile all that information, so if it's not by this Friday memo, it's okay.
I appreciate the time.
So thank you so much for answering my questions.
So you have more than, more than twelve hours, so that's good.
I'm on it.
I I do have a couple of questions, but uh I'm gonna go over to Ms. Armstrong.
Thank you, President Chrisfield. I just wanna know, um, we invest a lot of money into our after-school programs. How are our after-school programs helping with um our children who are struggling with math and reading?
That's a really good question. Our after-school programs uh have that layered in piece. So we've included training on ST math in particular uh so that they can utilize that in the after-school programs. So we try to extend our interventions into uh the after-school time.
Okay, and then um we also invest a lot in online tutoring. Are those services being used?
They are being used. They are not probably being used at the level that we would like to see them, uh, but they have increased each year that we've had them.
Is there some way that we can um promote using these online tools other, you know, because if if we're not gonna use them, then we shouldn't be paying for them.
Absolutely, we'll do another uh push for our school sites. We also bring it into our collaborative scoring time, but we can go wider with that and we can do something on BUSD news and make sure we get it out to our parents as well.
And uh one other question, are we implementing like the strategies or a program uh for for early college?
I don't, I'm not sure what you mean by strategies, but we do have an early college at Bellflower High School. We have dual enrollment at both of our schools.
Okay, but this is.
Are you talking about avid strategies possibly?
Well, we have avid, that that's, I'm talking about early college is is something else, but we we have so much. I just wanna, okay, let me ask you this last question. What what interventions are are you looking at that we don't already have or we're not using?
Well, we're currently looking at a reading intervention, because we don't have one of those across the entire district. And we're looking at our math interventions and how they are.
And we're looking at our math interventions and how they are being utilized, and looking to, to make sure that they're being used with fidelity, because that is what we found to work.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Couple of questions. One, so these tests start at third grade.
They do.
Right? Is, is there any test, like, to kind of get the baseline of students as they come in? I know they come in super, super young, but is there a test?
Yes, and I want to clarify, LPAC actually starts in kindergarten. It used to be TK, but now it's in kindergarten. So our LPAC test starts right from the beginning of schooling. For ELA math, we have our NWEA benchmark, and that assessment is taken starting with our TK students. So they'll have a reading and math pinpoint.
And do we have the most, because I know that, that NWEA, those results are much more immediate, right? We can kind of.
Correct.
When was the last time we did NWEA?
They just finished in the end of September, early October. So they, they're looking at those scores now.
When would those be, like typically, is it pretty quick?
Yeah, absolutely. As soon as the students take the test, you can get the scores.
Okay. Oh, so they're already available?
The teachers already have them, the school site should be analyzing them. And those were some of the scores that we shared. Remember, I talked about math scores being shared. That's what we pulled down specifically to send to our school sites.
Okay. Now, you've seen the scores. Would you say that those scores next year when we get, because they correlate, right?
They do.
Would you expect that next year we're going to be in a better position? I'm going to put you on the spot.
You did put me on the spot, and you got to remember there, yeah, they're at the beginning of the school year. So we will want to see that, how the scores are doing towards the end of the school year. But the correlations are interesting, because the grade levels that sort of have difficulty on our state test have difficulty on our NWEA as well. So the benefit, although I can't tell you if we're going to be better, I don't have a crystal ball since it was the beginning of the school year. But we do at least have standards-aligned data that our teachers can use to fill those gaps that they're seeing now.
Thank you. And when, but when we did this test, how close is the NWEA, EA test to this one? Is it, do we do it kind of like close together, or are they kind of spread out?
It's, they're at different times and different grade levels. So our state test is in April, May, and our mid-year is in January for our testing years.
Okay, but year after year, you tend to see correlation in the, in the trend?
We do.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice President Stewart.
I was going to just, again, to refer back to what he was just saying, President Chrisfield. So our NWA scores from last year, do they correlate with these scores this year?
The scores that we look at, they, they are closely related to these. They, the difficulty that we have is that we don't have our testing grades taking a spring assessment, because they're taking the, the CASP assessment. So the scores that we'll be looking at are January scores for our mid-year grades that are testing.
So we're doing them basically twice a year, NWA?
We do them fall and winter. And if you're a non-testing grade, you will do them three times.
And are those NWAs, are they cumulative? Or are they just on the standards that kids are learning in that quarter, that particular time period?
It's an adaptive test, so it's based on their abilities. So the reports can show that they're ready for their on-grade level standard or something that's below.
And then my last question is, how long has Think Together been doing after-school intervention?
Think Together started, I believe, last year with ST Math.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. So Think Together started last year?
Think Together didn't start last year, but with the layer of ST Math was last year, I believe.
And with those partners, because they, they do offer enrichment, do you kind of go over, like, hey, this is how we're doing? Like, do you go over like these types of?
Do I go over the?
Results with them?
The results with them?
Yeah.
The results, we wouldn't go over with them, but we would help them learn how to utilize the system and ensure that the kids can go through the journey in the ST Math.
So these do.
And the platform.
These do inform the changes, and I know that they're super easy to work with, they're pretty flexible, from what I hear.
Who's they, Think Together? Yes, absolutely, they're very flexible and open to all ideas.
Cool. Any other questions from the board?
Because of that, I would love to then see the collaboration with them to say, hey, look at, this is what we're doing in our scores, and can you come up with enrichment activities for math, for reading, for Language Arts? And have them think of specific things that might enrich our kids in that area.
Yeah, we can definitely share that with them, and they, they do have their curriculum, so I'll, I'll make sure that we make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you again for the presentation, Ms. Carter.
Absolutely.
All right. We will now move on to major action, right? Moving on to major action, item 10.1, approval of bylaws for the Bellflower Unified School District Foundation. Our general counsel has prepared a, a set of bylaws for approval. Mr. Serega, can I ask you to provide us an overview?
Thank you, Board President Chrisfield. So over the last couple of months, we've engaged in the process of forming a foundation, which would be able to gather charitable donations and would be used to supplement what the district's doing to enhance the education of its students. The corporation is a non, nonprofit public benefit corporation. Every corporation requires that bylaws be adopted. In this case, since the Board of Education is forming the foundation, there are certain rules that are required, or certain procedures are required to take place in order for those bylaws to be adopted. There was a subcommittee that was formed in kind of assisting in the creation of this foundation. One of the issues that came up in the subcommittee was the issue of whether or not the board would provide seed funding for the foundation to help it get off the ground. The reason that that is kind of an issue is because if any funds are given to the foundation, then the foundation is required to comply with the Brown Act, so they would have open meeting requirements. There are ways to create a foundation that are more autonomous and wouldn't require them to be Brown Act compliant. However, that is a decision that the board needs to make. The bylaws before you do have certain provisions for the Brown Act. But if the board would like to consider the possibility, again, not voting on doing so or not doing so, but just leaving the option open to allow for seed funding, then it would need to be Brown Act compliant. And so the bylaws before you today also need to be approved by the Board of Directors, which the Board of Education will appoint. So in that sense, I believe the discussion tonight, I would need a little bit of direction from the board if you would like to leave the option open for seed funding. In doing that, we can continue with the application process for approval or appointment of Boards of Directors for the foundation. And once that board is appointed, I'll go ahead and organize their first meeting, take the notes. They will approve the bylaws, at which time it will come back to the Board of Education for final approval. So I guess I would leave it open to the board this evening to discuss whether or not you would like to leave the option open for funding of the foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Serega. First of all, thank you for all the work that's went into this. I know this is something that has been talked about from this dais for a long time. And we went into, Vice President Stewart and I went to committee on it. And we've had a handful of meetings, we've dug into this, we've looked over these bylaws, talked about some of those issues. And I am very excited about what it can mean for our community. And I appreciate Vice President Stewart's participation, all the effort along the way. That said, so to, it sounds like the, the main issue is like whether or not it's in complete alignment with the Brown Act, right? That's kind of the big difference.
Yes, yes.
I have one question really fast. So are we allowed to, I know we're approving them, but we can make changes and approve the changes that we make tonight?
So if you make any changes tonight, I'll go back and redraft those, those changes. It'll go before the Board of Directors first, and then it'll come back to the Board of Education. The board does not have to approve those bylaws, they could recommend other changes take place. So it's not a final vote this evening on any bylaws.
Okay, thank you.
So if I'm not mistaken, so tonight we can give direction on any changes. And then, then we'll, the board will move forward at the next meeting in reviewing applications and appointing. But then after that, foundation, the inaugural board meet, they sign the bylaws, and it comes back to us for ratification.
Correct. And one caveat to that, you would probably want to have a special meeting to conduct the interviews for the potential appointees. There currently are seven members assigned to this board. If the board wishes tonight to increase it to nine or to 11, that's on the board, it's your prerogative. But if you have more applicants than current positions, a special meeting would probably be called to interview each applicant, at which point the board will decide who they'd like to appoint, and that appointment can take place at the next meeting in November.
Great. That is one, one change I would like to see on here. I know we had discussions on, I believe it started with 11, and then we discussed at the last committee meeting, and we brought it to seven. But, you know, I've done a lot of research myself and had a lot of conversations with people that have been in the foundation arena for a long time. And I would recommend to the board, if the board so wills, to move it to nine board members, start.
I, I would support that. Nine.
I would actually support it too, and I'll be honest, I was very skeptical. I was like, how are we going to get anybody to do this? So, but in talking to people in the community, I do think people are actually pretty excited about it. So I would be open to moving it to nine as well.
11 might be a little bit too big, though.
I, I think from what I understand is, is bylaws can be amended over time. So if the board gets in a position and that is going to suit that, they, they could actually make that decision down the road.
And it would still come to the Board of Education for approval. So any bylaw amendments come back to this board for final approval.
Right. So that was my change. As far as the seed money, so I think it's really important at, at the start of the foundation that we support the foundation in order to get up and, and running. Honestly, with the scope of the foundation in the beginning, I don't think we, I don't think we need seed money. But if it's going to help with the formation of the bylaws and making it compliant with the Brown Act, I would have it as a possibility, if we do need to support in that way.
Yeah, so you're not committing to anything in terms of actually providing any funds? You just leave the option open, and in order to do that, it would have to be fully Brown Act compliant.
Right. Yeah, I'm not opposed to having that language in there, and then making it fully Brown Act compliant. How do my colleagues feel about that, that portion?
I'm willing to discuss, and interested to discuss, how much are we thinking about? Like, as far as seed money goes, if it's in our possibilities to do that? Definitely want them to be successful as they start their journey. But I'm more interested in making sure that they are Brown Act compliant as well. So that's more of my focus, is making sure that that is a transparent committee, their board, going forward.
So to clarify, the board does not need to provide any funding to still make it Brown Act compliant. That's just an overarching decision that the board could make. If you want the foundation to be in compliance with the Brown Act and open meeting regulations and laws, you're, you're more than able to do so at this point. So it's not a, it's not necessarily a funding mechanism. It leaves an option open, but you can still make it Brown Act compliant without any future funding.
So to separate the two issues, I, I think, I would, I want openness and I want transparency, and I want, so I would, aside from any seed money, just, I would move forward on making it Brown Act compliant. And as far as money in the future, difference from seed money, is we could always engage in an MOU if, if there was a situation where we did need to support the foundation in a way. You could always do that later through that mechanism, right, rather than seed money?
Correct.
Okay. So yeah, I would say, for me, the nine members, I, I, and then making it Brown Act compliant. Outside of that, I, I absolutely love it. Ms. Garza?
Yes, you just mentioned MOU, how does, how would that work, Mr. Serega?
So basically, let's say that the foundation wants to put on an event. For example, we're talking about the foundation having some marquee events, like the Hall of Fame night. If there's, you know, an amount that they would need assistance with, the board can provide assistance for them to help set up that event. They host the event, bring in the funds, because those funds are still used for public benefit, for the benefit of the education of the students of the District of Bellflower. So in that sense, you would basically, you don't have to put the money up front. If, you know, a year down the road, they would need help with an event like that, the board can engage in that dialogue to be able to assist in putting on those kind of events with the foundation.
And so once we give them this support financially to put this event on, would, would this Board of Directors pay back that money that we lent them?
That would be whatever is agreed upon by this board and, and the board of the foundation. So if you want them to pay it back, that's something that you can add in there, that they would pay it back. So it's more of a loan. If it's a contribution to the event, the district can contribute to defend, to events that are of public benefit as well.
Okay, so it's, it's an option for this board?
Yeah.
To either go as way of a contribution or a loan?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I think that'd be decided like down, if that were to happen. Like, I think in terms of, you know, Ms., Ms. Stewart has talked about it a lot, and she's really pushed it. But like, having a Hall of Fame event for the district to bring in alumni, celebrate our students. You know, I, you know, I go to a lot of the Hall of Fame events in Long Beach, those are bigger events. Sometimes in order to, to make money, you have to spend. So I think they have an agreement there where, you know, they will support. It's a really healthy partnership over there. But I think the, the overall goal is that by supporting the foundation, the foundation is supporting the district, you know, 10 times more, right? So it's, it's really the healthy partnership, where I think it's just important to have the option to go to support in case we do need it.
And then there's also, if I might add, I'm sure you've been to a lot of events where you see like the platinum sponsor or gold sponsors are various cities or county officials or so on and so forth. That's also another mechanism by which the district could, could help.
Ms. Stewart?
No, I was just going to add to that of even like when they name buildings, or they name certain areas or locker rooms, or whatever they do, that's also just, there's so many just different ways. I'm really excited about this. We've been talking about it for a long time, so I'm really excited to see it happen.
And I will provide, I remember before I was even on the board, I went to a board meeting. And some of you might remember, but I think it was Josh Childress was, was making a donation. I know it's kind of a nuanced situation, but what I took from it as a parent in the district was it seems like there are people in our community that have been through our schools, that have done really well, that want to give back. I think it's about making it not only easier and more collaborative with them, but also doing that alumni reach out, like having those, those relationships and building, reaching back out to, to people that have went to our schools and bringing them back in. I think that's how we build a positive school culture, positive district culture. And I think that this is one mechanism that I'm just glad that we at least got to this point so far to make this thing happen. But it's really going to take a very solid board, and that's where I'm excited to put the word out. And we can talk about how we do that, as far as advertising, that we're taking applications and just really finding people that are going to support the effort and be the inaugural board of the first ever Bellflower Unified Foundation. Anyway, that was my speech. All right, Ms. Garza?
I have a lot of notes on mine. Can I just give it to one of our committee members? To pass it on to whenever you guys get together?
I think we're finished with it, right? This is the discussion.
So you can actually just provide me those notes, and I'll take the notes and the drafting.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. And? Ms. Armstrong?
No, I'm just, I'm actually happy to see it finally getting up off the ground also. My, my only thing too, because this is really important, they're going to have to do the fundraising and, and all of that kind of stuff. And, you know, that's fine, but a question. Will, will entities still be able to donate directly to the district if they so choose?
I believe yes.
They would be able to, yes.
They could still do that. Yeah, I think it, two totally separate things, it's more of a, one thing the district doesn't do is really go out and. It's more of a one thing the district doesn't do is really go out and so we can't solicit, right? We can't like solicit donations or be out in the community.
But the association, but the we as the association could, the foundation could. Okay. All right.
Cool. Any other questions from the board? So I know we're not, we don't need a motion to approve, but I think, Ms. Sarega, did you have the guidance or the direction you're looking for?
Yeah, and I would recommend tabling the the item.
Right.
Until after the foundation board convenes, approves the bylaws, and then it comes back to the board.
Great. Can I have a motion to table item 10.1, approval of bylaws for the Bellflower Unified School District?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichtfield?
Aye.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have any items to withhold from the consent agenda this evening?
Yes.
All right, seeing nope, I'm just kidding. Ms. Garza?
Item 11.7, please, employment of certificated. And I believe that's it. That's the only one for me.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda and withhold item 11.7, employment of certificated personnel?
So moved.
Do I got a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichtfield?
Aye.
All right, moving on to the first withheld item, item 11.7, inficated personnel. Ms. Garza, take it away.
Thank you, President Crichtfield. I just had a question for maybe Ms. Our interim superintendent, Azavito. Ms. Shante Knox, can you tell us a little bit more about her background, where she's coming from? What are her expertise, her skills? What made her stand out to you? Like she was the perfect candidate for us?
I'm going to have Dr. Ryan Smith share that information with you since he went through the entire process with the candidates.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza, for the question and good evening, board members. Happy to share a little bit more information about our candidate for Executive Director of Personnel Services. Dr. Knox would be joining our family with a tremendous amount of experience in education, including experience as a Director of Human Resources. Dr. Knox earned her doctoral degree in organizational leadership from Pepperdine University, her master's from Dominguez Hills, and her Bachelor of Science from Fisk University. During her administrative career, she served as a high school principal, a middle school principal, before becoming the Director and Administrator of K-12 Curriculum and Instruction in the Compton Unified School District. She was pulled into human resources. That's always been an area of her passion and an area of interest for her, and she served as the Director of Human Resources for about a year during probably one of the most difficult times to be a Director of Human Resources, right in the middle of the pandemic. And so she worked closely with Dr. Kanika White, who was the Assistant Superintendent there and is now the Assistant Superintendent for Los Angeles County overseeing human resources. The reason that she only spent one year in human resources in Compton was because her superintendent created an entirely new division dedicated to improving the improve improving the academic performance of African American and Black students. So she's held the position of Director of Black Student Achievement for the last three years, where she has worked tirelessly to close achievement gaps and raise test scores. And among the the many things that she has to be proud of with her leadership in that particular role is that she has helped with her team to raise achievement well beyond pre-pandemic levels for Black and African American students in Compton Unified. We did deep background on her, and everyone has had positive experiences and have been praising of her leadership and her qualities and her abilities to work collaboratively with people to solve complex problems. One of the questions that both Ms. Azavito and I had of Dr. Knox in our two very long interviews with her was why do you want to go back to human resources? And the reason that she is so interested in going back to human resources is she felt like her superintendent pulled her away from it way too soon. And she really loved it, and this is the perfect opportunity for her to do that. We had 12 applicants when we went through this process, 12 well-qualified applicants. We selected five of them to come in for interviews. The interviews were not easy at all. We asked some pretty tough scenario-based questions, and we were impressed tremendously with Dr. Knox. We invited her back for a follow-up where we spent about an hour together with her and really got to know her better. And the thing that we were impressed with was her vast knowledge, her collaborative spirit, and the fact that we really see her being a good fit for our team and a being of service to our certificated staff members in particular and being a resource for everyone in our district, including administrators and leadership.
Just a quick follow-up question. What would her duties be as the Executive Director of Instructional Personnel?
Thank you for asking that. So essentially, she will be overseeing just about every aspect of the business that relates to human resources functions related to our certificated employees. So that would include, and I'll just list a bunch of things, and I'll probably leave a lot out because human resources, there's a lot of lot to it. Recruitment of candidates, retention of candidates, following up on the required state and federal reporting related to human resources. She'd be our compliance officer when it comes to Title IX issues, when it comes to certain types of employee complaints, those types of things. She'd oversee credentialing and all of those various aspects. So human resources is a broad piece of it. She'd also be a person that would interact quite a bit with, in addition to myself, quite a bit with our certificated association in particular. She'd also assist with negotiations.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to get to know her background and who we you have decided was the perfect fit for us. So thank you for answering my question.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza.
Any other questions from the board? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve? I didn't write it down. 11.5.
You have that motion?
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Armstrong, second by VP Stewart. Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichtfield?
Aye.
Can I just make a quick correction? You were just voting on item 11.7, not 11.5.
Correction, motion 11.5.
11.7.
Oh, yeah, seven, yeah, that one.
Yes, that one.
All right, ma'am.
Please.
All right, another motion for 11.7.
You have that motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Armstrong, second by VP Stewart.
You don't need another vote, just we'll reflect the correction in the minutes of the meeting.
It was just a public correction.
There you go.
No, thank you. Moving on to board communications, we'll go ahead and kick it off with Board Member Armstrong.
All right, welcome, everyone. Thanks so much for coming out and spending, you know, Thursday evening with us. And, you know, this week was really busy with with Red Ribbon Week activities. I'm a teacher myself, so I didn't get a chance to celebrate it with Bellflower and Bellflower Schools, but in my district, we did. Red Ribbon Ribbon Week, we focused on kindness. We had a lot of kindness activities. We were challenged to execute an act of kindness every day. So to assist in accomplishing accomplishing the kindness task, we were given a calendar of suggested ways to show acts of kindness toward one another. So we did this every day. Okay, I missed a few days, okay? But anyway, an act of kindness can start off with a simple smile to someone. Once you commit to kind acts, you'll find that it's not for the other other individual, it's really for you. So take time to ponder that idea. And then we also focused on drugs, say no to drugs. You know, a lot of trick or treat is trick or treat is fast approaching. And if you've been following the news lately, you've been probably hearing about the fentanyl crisis or epidemic in our society. You know, these times have become more terrifying than ever before. So families, if you participate in these activities, please take extra precautions to check everything before you allow any items to be ingested. I must say that it is sad that I had to had that this had to be communicated. There are many hurt individuals in our society that for some reason seem to get enjoyment from hurting our most vulnerable and precious assets, which is our children. And we also did the anti-bullying campaign, and this right here is crucial. You know, some, maybe many of us have been the victim of bullying once, twice, intermittently, or on a regular basis. Bullying in many times go unchecked, leaving the victim helpless and hopeless, which can very well lead to depression, isolation, self-harm, having thoughts of suicide, or even being punished if they try to defend themselves. Also, the perpetrator at times go unscathed, which only empowers them so they think. Then here comes the tragedy, the disbelief, and no one knows how it could have happened. But we ignored signs, ignored cries of help, but now it's too late for an intervention. But wait, let's be aware that the perpetrator themselves may be a victim. Both the victim and the perpetrator may be in need of some sort of help. So everyone involved most likely need to be approached. So we are we are in a mental health epidemic, and I want to see more of what we as a district can do to provide supports, interventions, and resources to our community. Bellflower, let's be kind, let's say no to drugs, and let's not tolerate bullies. And again, you know, happy national disability employment awareness. I just wanted to just just say that I remember years ago when Nissan was in in housed in Torrance before they left for Texas, Tennessee, one of those was it was Tennessee? Yeah, they had a cafeteria. Oh, my goodness. They had a cafeteria that was staffed by students who had different abilities, and it was one of the cleanest cafeterias you could go to. And they were very polite, they were trained on, you know, they wouldn't just swipe your food away, you know, but they would just say, hey, are you are you finished? They were really well-trained. And so it's really important for us, starting from young, our early intervention teachers, you never know what that child can be once they age out of our system. So it's so important to to just try to tap into the potential. My I myself am am a special, I teach children with with special abilities, and I can I could see, I'm like, you know what? This child may very well be an interpreter. You know, this child here can recognize what make and model of a car is down the street, and they love cars, they may be a mechanic. So let's let's know that each and one of our children, we don't, we just need to do our part in 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 giving them the best. And you never know what can happen in the end. All right? That's it. I can go on and on about my experiences, but we don't have all night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Moving on to Ms. Clerk, Myra Garza.
Thank you, President Crichtfield. Good evening, everyone. I was I was able to attend the Liquid Education Foundation Golf Tournament. I did not do the golfing because I'm horrible at it, but maybe next year I will definitely take the risk and jump on in there as horrible as I may feel, but I'm looking forward to it next year. I also will be able to accompany our some of our staff and our PTA tomorrow on the Red Ribbon judging, and I'm very excited for that because this is the first time that I've ever been able to attend this. You know, it just happened to be that I have that time tomorrow. And then I will also be able to be at the outgoing trustee reception for Marissa Perez, so I will also be representing Bellflower there as well. And today, I actually was invited separate, not not an invitation through the district, but it was an invitation through Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. They were celebrating their 50 years of their water quality lab, and I've got to say, it was so exciting to be there. I heard some of their speakers, and one of them really resonated with me. He was talking about how their staff won't be needing new employees, microbiologists, scientists, engineers, and I just thought, what a better way to connect, you know, what I do as here as a board member, and start some conversations with that agency. And hopefully that way we can go ahead and maybe guide our students into these professions because I've never would have even thought about engineers being needed, you know, at a water quality lab. But absolutely, that's what they do, and I'm looking forward to connecting our superintendent and maybe some of her staff so that way they can start those preliminary conversations and see how we can start, you know, working on that. They do currently have a connection with Cal Poly Pomona, but what I was saying to this director who I speak was speaking to, by the time they get to university level, it's too late. We can't do anything for them, nor can we like expose them to these types of careers. So if we can connect them earlier, then it may make that, you know, change or that impact in a student. You know, God knows that we're going to need a lot of innovative, more flexible, adaptive students and creative as well as we get closer and closer, you know, to these environmental changes that are happening now, and this probably will be a best avenue for what some of our students in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Vice President Stewart?
Good evening. On Friday, I attended the Mayfair football game for homecoming. Mayfair won 42-21, which was amazing, and I just want to say congrats to Ms. Asia Lee on being crowned the homecoming queen. On Monday, I attended a meeting with President Crichtfield and staff regarding the foundation. I'm just really glad that we're establishing the bylaws and things are moving. I am so excited to get this started for our students. I have spoken about this for a long time, we have, and so I just really believe that it's important to honor our past alumni and students that paved the way. So I hope with this foundation, we kind of already talked about it, that we can set up a Hall of Fame dinner. When I first came onto this board, I was actually asked this by one of my friends. Her name's Ki Williams. She's an All-American volleyball player at the University of Hawaii, and she's like, why don't we have a Hall of Fame? And I'm like, we actually do, but a lot of people don't know about it. And she's definitely someone that should probably go in. So I'm really excited excited that we're establishing this and that we're going to be talking about this. I think it can create a lot of positive things for our student athletes, for members of our music department, other clubs, organizations, as well as helping with some of our families and just giving assistance. So I think this foundation is going to be a great thing, and I'm really glad we're working on this together. On Monday, I attended the LAKSTA meeting. Again, LAKSTA is the Los Angeles County School Trustee Association. We had two presentations. The first one was a presentation on AI, and I just want to share a little bit about that because I am on that committee. They discussed they discussed how important this is for districts to be focused right now on this. When hiring, they talked about the two-thirds of employees will not hire someone that doesn't have AI skills, so it's really important. And it's really important for us in a district to do two things. One, to focus on AI literacy, being able to use the technology. And secondly, to focus on AI fluency, which is to be able to create with it. So they recommended that maybe a task force is created to answer the following questions, and I'm going to just go through these five questions. One, how do we prepare our district, our schools to use and govern AI? We would do that with our policies, our principles, and our processes. Two, what can we do with AI that adds value and has a positive impact? And that could be something like resource guides, classroom examples, and tools. Three, who can we work with for good, responsible AI solutions? That would be maybe a database of AI fact sheets, a vendor list. That would be maybe a database of AI fact sheets, a vendor list, things of that sort. Four, how do we ensure vendors follow our expectations? That would be to establish our requirements for our AI systems. And five, how do we prepare when things go wrong? They recommend having an AI response plan. So I hope that these are some of the things that we consider as we start to establish our technology plan and we're talking more about AI. It's very important. And I know Linwood, their assistant superintendent, he was spearheading this and he was amazing. I know Ms. Armstrong was there, and so he might be someone to lean on if we need to collaborate with someone. We also received an update and a presentation on the state bond from Patrick O'Donnell. He just noted that school facilities, oh, some people don't think they're very important, but they really set the tone for the school day. It's the first thing that you see when people walk in. So this is, I just couldn't agree more. And so I just hope that if we do have the opportunity to improve our school facilities, to get matching funds, to put another bond on the ballot, that we do that. And also just one thing, and I know that Renee, you know, but if we do sign up for matching bond money, he just reminded us that our CBO can see where we are in line by contacting the Office of Public School Instruction and the school facility programs. So just a reminder. And then on Tuesday, I attended the Alliance Leadership Meeting. We discussed safety and block schedules. We always just generate great ideas from this forum. I agree with CSCA representative. I love this forum. It just, it's really good to hear about things and to be able to collaborate. I'm really excited to hear that we're having phones installed in all of our elementary schools, that we're working on the buzz-in systems in all of our offices, and that Parent Square just seems to be a really great technology use for our teachers and staff to be able to notify our families and staff when it's needed. So I'm really excited to hear about that. I want to say a good congrats to our Bellflower High School Girls' Flag Football Team and Coach Miller. They won their very first CIF game, and so that's really exciting. They play Friday, I believe. And lastly, I just want to take one second to just thank our technology support, our department, on how our board meetings are actually shown. I watch a lot of board meetings from different districts, and I just love that you can go to one particular item so that if someone's not here, they don't have to watch the whole meeting. I know, not to knock my district, but you have to scroll with the little P, the little like YouTube. You have to go through that. And to be able to just say, oh, I want to think about that one item and go to it and hit it, it's just so amazing. So it's very accessible, and I appreciate that. So thank you so much to our technology department. And that's it. And again, go Dodgers. Have a good night.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. All right, a couple of things. I do want to say I'm really happy that the Alliance meetings are continuing. Our partners around the table, Michelle, Anthony, Dan, Carrie. The candid conversations, those meetings like the one we just had are, what I think is so valuable about being able to come together with district staff. And Ryan, Lisa, thank you for just being honest and just like saying, hey, these are the issues, and let's figure this out together. I don't know if that was happening before me, and I just know I see it now, and I really do appreciate those conversations. So thank you. I also, so, and one of the things we talked about was security. And I know that's something that we're going to be bringing before the board soon is some, some options, and the RFP will be going out. So there are some of the ideas in that Alliance meeting. It's not just all talk there. We're going to be bringing things forward in the near future for that. I met with BTA and CSCA leadership over the past couple of weeks. I really need to write bigger when I make these notes. The Lakewood Education Foundation, I didn't golf that well, but I did golf better than Dan Fong, so that's good. I don't really know. I just saw the one swing, but I, I'm, I'm guessing I did. I am happy that, and I appreciate you, Ms. Azaveto, for giving the update on the, the Mayfair fields. I've gotten, I've gotten emails and concerns and, you know, I think in the past, maybe we, we were, we jumped at a timeline that may not have been reasonable from the start. And that's nobody up here's fault, but I will say that they are going to happen. And I appreciate you laying that out tonight, and I'm very excited about it. And I want the community to know that it is moving forward, not as fast as we would all like. But it is going to happen, and it's, it's going to be amazing, and we're all going to be very happy with it once it's done. Really looking forward to wrestling season coming up. I'll probably pull a muscle just watching them, but I'm looking forward to going to all those matches. Ronald McDonald House, I went to their Few Good Men and, this year is Few Good Men and Women Gala. That was always great. And I'll be honest, it makes me even more excited, and those events are even more interesting knowing that we're going to have our own foundation here. And, you know, I will say, when it happens, and I'm, I'm putting out, it's, it's going to happen when we have our first ever BUSD Hall of Fame event. Just know, it, it came from this lady right here. And, you know, her vision and really driving this and the work we've been able to put in the, the committee and support of the board. I'm really like, I'm very excited about where that's going to go. And, yeah, but it is going to take the effort of people on that board. And so when that gets out, the application to apply, I would recommend anybody who has a, a passion for our district that wants to make a difference in our district to apply for that. What else? Oh, we also went to the, did you already mention the Bay Center? We did, walked on the Bay Center? That's okay. We also, we were able to go walk around Bay Center, and it was very educational, learned a lot. I'm able to take a lot of information back, and Ms. Azaveto and I have talked since then. And I'm really looking forward to the changes that we're going to make going forward. We're going into that committee, I believe, in the end of next month. Is it like four weeks from now?
I want to say it's within two weeks.
Okay, within two weeks. That was ballpark. Yeah, so the Committee on Future Planning Facilities and Declining Enrollment. We have a lot of, 28th, that's what I was going to say. So I'm just, I'm happy that we're being forward-thinking and being strategic on how we move this district forward in a fiscally responsible way that services all of our kiddos. I'm sure there's more, but we're, we're going to get out of here pretty early tonight. So that's it for that. We'll now move on to informational items. Does the board have any question regarding informational items? All right, seeing none.
I just have a comment. I'm really excited that President Critchfield will be going to the CABSE Conference in San Diego with us. Thank you, President Critchfield.
Just make sure you bring your heels. Don't, don't let them break this time. That was a funny video. Yeah, so if there's no objection, this meeting is, and if it's okay with everyone here, I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting. It's my little brother's birthday. I'd like to adjourn in his memory, Jeff Sutton. And this meeting is adjourned at 7:56 PM until the regular board meeting, be held Thursday, November 14th, 2024.